Recording in progress. Okay. This is the meeting of the Southwick Public Library Board of Trustees. It is January 25th and we are calling the meeting to order at 7:03 PM. And since we are doing hybrid, if you guys just want to go around and say your name.
This is Michael McMahon.
Tracy McQuar.
Maria Gallo.
Tammy Saak, the sale on.
And Tammy is on Zoom. Okay. So, no public comments. As far as communications go, Tammy, let me know at any point if you have trouble hearing or anything like that. I think we should be good, but just in case. I wanted to update you guys on a couple of things. Molly in the children's room has created a very cute. I only made one copy of her work because it uses a lot of ink. But she made a little copy of. She is doing welcome baby bags for new parents and expecting parents. So anybody can come in. They just have to have a library card to take it so they can show their card. Or they can sign up for one and they get a bag with a couple of books. What does she say? A couple of books, stuff about early literacy and some extra goodies. So, and they're really cute little bags. Sure, them actually. Yes, they have a very cute like chip. We went with our little, and you can see that we thought with the kind of rustic.
Like a canvas bag?
Yeah, yeah, and they're pretty good quality. So, that's nice. That is what Molly has been up to in the children's room. Um, yeah, so we have, I mentioned last time, I asked about some policies on the website. As of now, all of our current policies have been posted online on our website. So if anyone were to ever want to see one of our policies, everything's up there. And we also, as part of the policy, we have like the community room application and everything's up there too, to just make it more convenient for people. And I am working, I did get in touch with the, I think he's called the School Resource Officer. And he is going to see if this school is doing. I've been trying to get in touch with the police department about getting some type of like emergency training, anything like that. And he came down to talk to us about that. So we're going to see if he can get us hooked up with, because the school is doing a program, like a virtual training. And I think it's like active shooting lockdowns. He's, I know it's not totally relevant to us, but it may, you know, some of it may translate to us, so.
So they teach you, the teachers?
Yeah. Not the students, it's for the teachers, but hopefully we can get our staff in on the training. So it's not 100% relevant to us, but I mean, I think they'll be.
The basics.
Yeah, we can pull from it. So I'm going to try to work on some policies for us to have here as far as safety and training. The School Resource Officer did mention that it would be a good idea to have a panic button somewhere. So we'll probably look into that. David Sutton, the new maintenance coordinator, he's trying to coordinate something with all the buildings to get them on the alarm, same alarm company. Something along those lines. So once he has that kind of figured out, then what company will be, then I can talk to them about a panic button or something, which probably isn't a bad idea.
There's two or three different alarm companies in the six or eight.
Yeah, so. Yeah. He's really good. He is, he is excellent. He came down and he sat with us and he asked, you know, what, what, what do you need? What, what can we work on? So, yeah, I think it'll be really good. Yeah, he is excellent.
Yeah, David's really great. I'm sure he'll have everything before you know it all set up for you.
Absolutely, yeah, he's, he is right on the ball. So I'm working on those policies kind of in the background. Hopefully over the next couple of months I'll have something. It's not something that's going to happen overnight. And I'd rather have somebody, you know, once I write something, have somebody in law enforcement actually look at things, you know. But. So it is grant application time again. Molly and Heather are working on the grant for short-lived children's services. Looking to get some, it sounds like right now that we're still on the grant writing process, but they're looking into getting maybe a new iPad for the teen department. Because I think theirs is quite old. And for the children's room and maybe some new technology along those lines. And the Sarah Gillette Services for the elderly. I think I'm going to try to get funds for it because we have those magnifiers for people who have trouble reading. But ours are so clunky and they're not good anymore. So I was going to see if we could get maybe two or three of those that people can take home with them. The other question I do have is, since the friends aren't doing a book sale, they were going to plan on doing it for spring. But we've been, as, as we've slowly, you know, been weeding and cleaning things out. We're ending up with a lot of just piling, you know, on the corner over there, a lot of books that have been weeded. That, you know, if they're not doing a book sale. They're just, they're piling up and, you know, we can take them to the bindery in Agawam, but it's, it's getting to be a lot. If I were to take everything, it would be like two or three trips every so often. And it's, it's getting to be a lot. So I'm not sure if in the past, what, you know, Diane or Anne has done with them. But, or if this is kind of new territory, since the friends aren't, aren't doing as many book sales. But we're, we're just ending up with a lot of weeded stuff. Because a lot of the areas of the collection have clearly not been weeded in a long time. So it's, it's stuff that really needs to be done, but it's also causing like, we're starting to move over to the table in the back.
I think the French ones they planning on doing.
Yeah. I think they're looking at May, in May. But, um, you know, given, given the rate that, you know, we're kind of doing weeding a couple of times a month. We're going to end up with so much more stuff than, than we can possibly store. And I can't put anything in the basement anymore. We could, we could, because it's all cleaned and patched up now, but it's, it comes down to me dragging things up and down the stairs.
The bindery personnel won't come out?
They used to have a van, they do not anymore. So they will not come out. So. That's, that's getting to be a problem because we just, we don't have the, you know, the storage space. And people are still cleaning out their houses because they're stuck at home. So we're still getting a very large amount of donations left in, in the book drop just popped in there that we just, we don't have the, the space for.
Maybe you didn't end up getting to the point where some of the older stuff or whatever you just said, okay, that's going to Agawam.
Yeah.
Those will maybe 40 or 50% of the stuff, or whatever percentage.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think at this point, I mean, we'll, we'll probably have to bring all of it over. Because, you know, if that's what the pile looks like in January, you know, to save it all till, till May is, it's just too much. So, and it's, it's just come down to me loading up my Jeep. Because my husband won't let me borrow his truck because men in their trucks, you know.
Well, you ought to borrow him, you should borrow him his truck and his testosterone.
Nancy said she could get her husband's truck and we can bring our van.
Or what, what does the binary do?
They just collect them and they, they repurpose them.
I was going to say, there's that book drop right in Southwick. Maybe you could get some of the maintenance people so that you don't even have to go to.
Is that at the transfer station?
It's at the transfer station. So why can't you maybe get some, I'm sure some of the highway guys would come and do this and get rid of them in the book drop.
That's true, I hadn't thought of that.
And that's, they go to like a third world country or something, so they're being recycled.
Yeah, oh yeah.
So I think that's a good option for you. That way you don't have to do it, you know, you don't have to luggage get those.
I don't think that, I'm not a Southwick resident, I don't think they'll let me in. I don't have a dump sticker.
No, but what I'm saying, yeah, just ask, you know.
Ask Dave.
Yeah. Okay.
See if any of the highways are, yeah.
I have a truck too, if you need me to come load the truck up to take anything.
Thank you, Tammy.
I didn't understand what she said.
She has a truck too.
Oh, yeah.
And the last thing is, we're scheduling, now that we're fully staffed, we're going to try to schedule a staff meeting in February, just to get everybody together. Going to do it virtually because that seems to work the best. I would love to be able to do a staff appreciation day again. But I don't, you know, last time when I asked the town about closing down for a day to do like a staff development day, the stuff, the kind of, they, they wanted it to be during the summer. When the kids were in school, so I don't think, you know, we'll be able to do anything for a while.
You couldn't do it when the schools are closed down for teacher enhancement days or whatever.
We could, I think the idea is that, you know, they want us to be here, you know, not only for the kids to come after school, but if they like need it for homework and computers and things like that. So I guess sometimes when the schools are closed, maybe they'll want to do homework, so.
Wow, what a concept.
So we're, we're going to have a staff meeting virtually. I'd love to do some kind of staff development day, but maybe in the summer. I don't think we're going to be able to, to do it at this point in time. But Library Staff Appreciation Day is in April, so we'll try to do something nice for, for everybody. Get them a little gift or something to say thank you. And then that is all I had for communication.
I have, do have a question. Maybe it's on a personal note. I was in the big house up at Southwood Village today and I noticed the sign that you're not going up there with books anymore. What's been happening?
We, we're going, we're going there with books to deliver. We had a bin for people to return library items. However, I had a sign that said, please return only Southwick items, because somebody started returning, there was like a Springfield item there.
Okay.
And I think if there's no malicious intent behind it, I think people just get confused and they take something from it without realizing it's still out to somebody.
Okay, I just wondered.
Yeah, no, no, we're, we're definitely still delivering. It's just the, the box we had for returns up there, it just.
It's didn't work out.
It wasn't, we, in the past couple of weeks, we've had a couple of things go missing. You know, and like I said, there's, there's no malicious intent behind it. I think it was just a simple mistake. But, you know, when you have upset patrons calling because they know they returned this book and why is it still on their card and?
Yeah, okay, I was just curious what was, what was happening.
No, that's, that's it. No, we're, we're definitely still delivering, definitely still picking up from people. It's just that the return, but it was nice to have. And it was fine for a while, but like in the past month or two, things have started to go missing.
Ah, okay.
Unfortunately, you know, maybe we'll try it again if we can figure out a better system, but.
Okay, I was just, yeah. I said, I was just curious, because I haven't been up for my mail or anything and over a week, and all of a sudden, sign was there.
Oh, I asked Nancy to put something up because I just, I didn't, you know, I don't want people to, you know, think that we can't do anything for them. Because we can definitely deliver and we can pick up directly.
Well, she had made, there was something on the sign that said there would still be deliveries made, just, just let Nancy know or something.
Yeah, they can still call.
But there wasn't an explanation.
Yeah.
You know, like you're saying, you're still delivering.
Yeah.
But that explanation wasn't there, so.
Yep, definitely, definitely still delivering.
Good, okay.
And the next thing is the December minutes courtesy of Maria.
Looks good to me. Tracy approved the minute? Make a motion to approve, yeah.
Can I second my own minute?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 That was, that was Tammy on Zoom.
It's unanimous.
And then we have the December statistics here. And circulation is still, still above 4,000, so that's really good. Door numbers are still good, I'd say. Still an increase in, in the number of new cars, we're at 14 for December. So I think overall it's, it's looking pretty good. As you can see at the bottom for fiscal year '22, from July through December, each month has had over 4,000 circulations. Which has been very good. Any questions for anybody or?
No.
Usually it looks good.
So if we're ready to move on to the old business? Good, okay. So we had our new circulation librarian who was Tanya Kellav's replacement. Her name is Sonia Bella and she started the first week of January. And she has taken on very quickly. Learned very fast, I would say, and then she's a great addition. And she was, she was a power library user before on circulation, so she knew us very well.
So is it S O N I A?
S O N I A, yep. And the last name is V E L L A. And she's a local business owner in town, so she's very knowledgeable about.
Whistlers?
Um, it's a, it's a pet waste disposing company. I can't remember the name off.
You don't use your backyard for that?
If, if somebody could come and clean up my backyard, I would greatly appreciate it.
I didn't know there were such businesses.
I know, it's like the things you don't think of that you need, I'm like, wow, I could really use this. I have two very large dogs, I could definitely use this. And we are still working on the LSTA grant. As I mentioned before, the barriers are up. We are just about ready to place an order for some tables and chairs to go in there. I was just trying to figure out, you know, given the space, the accessibility requirements. But we found a good set of tables and chairs, so I think they will be ready to go. Hopefully by the middle of next month, depending on how quickly places deliver. With the way things are going, we have no idea.
They have a container in the Pacific?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So, so hopefully I would say in the next month we'll be able to have everything set up to go.
It looks good.
It does look good.
You're talking about the, the study spaces?
Yeah.
Yeah, I took a peek last time I was there, I really like it.
Nice, yeah, I mean, it's, it's not like, it's not soundproof, but it kind of gives you the illusion of privacy almost.
Yeah.
So, so what we think we're going to do is, you know, because I think the, the teenagers might come and take over. What I think we're, we're kind of going to do is have them, you know, be reservable. So, you know, if you come in and nobody's in there and it's not reserved, just check in with us at the desk, we can let you know you can use it. Because otherwise, I'm afraid, you know, instead of like a study and meeting space, it's going to kind of be a place for the, the teenagers to camp out after school. Which, which is fine, but they have their own space and I want it to be available for people, you know, who, who want it or need it. Like if they want it to study and do homework, that's great, but I don't want it to be like a, let's hang out where the librarians can't see us kind of thing. So, yeah, well, we'll work out the final details on that once everything comes in, but hopefully by the end of February, I think everything should be ready to go. As far as new business, not really much to update on COVID-19, I think I just put that in there. We do have the new signs out that Massa recommended. We're still being very conscious about cleaning and sanitation. And, and yeah, we're taking it one day at a time. And I mean, so far we've been lucky, but if there ever is a staff shortage and we have to close, then we have to close. But we, we've been very lucky so far, so. At one point last month, we were handing out COVID tests, which were gone in like a day or two. So that, I don't know if we'll be getting any more, that's kind of up to the Board of Health, but.
Well, you can get it free now online.
Yeah, you can get them free from the post office. So it's, it's not as in demand, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, who knows, if, if we get some, then.
They say that, I've registered to get mine, but we'll see when they come.
After the pandemic.
Yeah.
Like the mask.
Like they say, seven to 10 days, but they're not saying what year, seven to 10.
And then as far as the line speed upgrade, I know we talked about it either last month or the month before. And we decided not to pursue it because it was only a one-time flip with the things were really slow. However, ironically, in the past month, there's been a lot of cases where things have just slowed down completely and just kind of shut circulation down because we can't do anything. So. Looking at the numbers again, it looks like it's, it's going to be about a $1,000 increase to get the line speed upgrade. But I think it's, it's definitely worth it. So we went ahead and did it and starting February 1st, we will have faster, faster bandwidth. The technical terms go above my head, but, but yeah, we, we've been in touch with CW Mars and there's been many cases. It happened like all of a sudden, regularly, things started to just, you know, really slow down to the point where we can't really do anything with circulation if, you know, the computers are slow to the point where you can't load anything.
It's only a thousand dollars a year.
Only, only an additional $1,000 a year. So the number she gave me, like for, I think this was for next year, that normally we would pay 1,549. And then there's the E-rate discount, which brought it down to 599. However, since we're upgrading, it would go up to 9,000, not 9,000, $999. So, and just for, it would just be for a couple of years until the E-rate cycle happens again. And then we can get the discount applied again. But I think it's, it's better to have it, have it than not, so. And I have, everybody has the budget packets that I made out for you. So the first page, it isn't something we turn into the, the, the town accountant. This is just something I use to calculate all of the salaries and everything. Because I need to know the total union salaries, total non-union salaries. The under salaries for myself and Heather D., Heather's includes her new $27 an hour request. And mine includes the number that would be in my contract as Mike and I discussed with Carl and Joe Diddy last week. And then all of the union staff positions include all the increases that would begin July 1st for all the union employees. And also included in there is the new part-time circulation position, if we were to hopefully get it. And at the very top is the calculation for the municipal appropriation requirement. So essentially, yeah, we have to meet, yeah. We have to meet the 459,796 for the Mar. Page two is the budget broken down. As you can tell, and the very last page is an explanation as to why we didn't show a 5% decrease. And as I talked with Mike about this, last year we didn't do it either because of 5%. If you look at our total fiscal year 2022 budget, which is this year, if we were to do a 5% decrease, we would be below our municipal appropriation requirement. Which we, we really, we really can't have. So we did not do a 5% decrease. We did essentially do a level funded, I think most of all of our lines are perfect. So the only thing I requi, increased in the operations was the informational materials line. Because the informational materials, that line, the state requires us to spend 19% of our budget on informational materials. And that 92,000 reflects that. So essentially, the only differences from this year and last year was increase in information materials and changes in the salary lines. And page, page two, I guess it's page two, form number two, this just lists the new salaries. So the increase in salaries for Heather, the assistant director's position, would basically come out to 5,652. That's the increase we're looking for, from 24.0092 an hour to $27 hourly. And the new part-time position at 12 hours a week would only be a 9,391 and 20 cents annually. So in the grand scheme of things, it's not a huge, it's not a huge request. And then form, form three basically says the same thing. This is just why we're, why we're requesting a little bit more detail and what the priority would be. And form four and five are pretty much not used at this time because we're not increasing anything in the operations other than the usual. I don't know, Mike, if, I mean, we, we've increased the info materials from time to time, but I don't think I've ever included it on the, the new operation. I think that's just solely for new, new line items completely.
You're saying that I want to re-cop it, the building again, or painting, or I'm going to put a new siding on the $45,000?
Yeah, and the Capitol project, we left blank. I'm, I'm hoping to get our outside sign revamped because it's looking a little shabby. But it's just, it's taking a little while to get kind of quotes and see where we want to be at with that, so. There we go, we're back, okay.
Yep.
So that was, that, for anyone watching, that was a brief interruption on Zoom and Zoom shut down for a minute. The owl is back up, so we will continue our discussion of the budget. So, yes.
I heard up to, I heard up to Form 4, I think, and then it cut out.
Yeah, Form 4 was blank and then Form 5 was the Capitol projects, which we decided to leave blank because we're still looking at options for the outside sign. Maria asked about a digital sign and we decided that the process, the price was too much. And I believe, I do, from my understanding, I believe you do need permits and such for that to have it. So we'll continue to look at prices for the outside sign. And probably end up using just state aid for it, depending on the, on the cost. There is a company in Westfield that thinks they can refurbish what we have and put in better lighting. So he's going to come by and take a look at it, so we'll, we will see what that brings. And the, the final page is just an explanation of our budget sheet. And it explains the municipal appropriation requirement and how we calculated that. And it basically explains why, why you don't see a 5% decrease budget, because that would put us below our municipal. Because that would put us below our municipal appropriation requirement. And in forms two and three, I just wrote a little bit more information as to why we're looking for additional part-time circulation librarian. Essentially, we just need more help in the evenings because, you know, we have two people here during the day on the desk. But at night, you know, when we're having large programs and Susan is by herself. And so we do really need another part-time person in the evening. And also the reasoning for the assistant director's increase in salary. Basically, we're just, we're looking to provide a fair wage because as we saw at the last meeting. Her current salary is the kind of the lower middle range of assistant directors of towns with a similar size. So hopefully that makes sense to you guys and you think that would make sense to the finance committee.
And it's like lower previous person.
Yes.
Position was getting three or four years ago.
Yes, so I reflected that in here as well. Fiscal year 20, the salary was about almost 51,000 and then it decreased to 46,000 after the, somebody left. So. So that's, that's just a little aside, I'm attaching to the budget when we hand it in, just to kind of explain. You know, what, what isn't always, you know, there, I feel like maybe it's the librarian in me, but I feel like there's sometimes, you know. There's, there's more stuff that needs to be said than just numbers.
We need to explain everything, especially if you're using abbreviations like M.A.R.
Yes, yeah.
They need to know what that means.
Yeah.
And the budget here will be two Saturdays in March. I think it's the first Saturday and the third Saturday.
And we'll find out when the library is.
They put up a schedule and they say, library, I just stayed there. Eight twenty-five and you've got 10 minutes.
Yeah. Sometimes it feels like 6:30 in the morning.
So if everybody approves of budget, if you, if you would like to vote on it, I will, it's due tomorrow, so I will hand it in tomorrow.
Motion approve the budget.
Tammy seconds.
All those in favor, Michael McManus? Yes.
Maria Gallo, yes.
Jason Meswark, yes.
Tammy Saakbassal, yes.
Okay. Thank you for that, I'll get that submitted tomorrow. The next thing was the online open meeting watch ratings. It sounded like everybody has either attended or they're attending tomorrow's. And I just want to make sure that everybody sent, just you're supposed to send the confirmation, I think. And send it into Michelle Hill at the treasurer's office, so she gets a copy of that too, so that she knows that everybody attended.
I mean, you know, I don't know if I got a confirmation back from them.
You should have gotten it immediately.
It's, yeah, it's, I believe you did.
After you register, it'll come back immediately.
Oh, after you register.
Yeah, yeah, with a link to join, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm ready for a copy to win a copy.
As long as Michelle got something from everybody, then.
Okay.
Yeah. We're in good shape. All right, and I just redid a couple of policies, just to add in a couple of things. The first one is the responsibility for library operations. When I wrote this, we originally had only three part-time, I'm sorry, three full-time positions. Myself, the assistant director and Heather, who's our team librarian. But now that we have Molly on board who's full-time, I basically included in here essentially what it is, it's a chain of command. If myself isn't here, who's in charge? If both myself and our assistant director aren't here, who's in charge? And basically it goes, it goes down the line until once it's gone through all the full-time positions. Then it essentially becomes whoever's the most, the senior most positioned staff. So that, you know, if we were to ever forbid, if any, if like all of us were out because of COVID or something. Then we would know who the responsibility would fall to.
You want to vote on this, the modification was made.
Sure, do you want to approve them all together or one by one? You know, it's up to you, whatever.
The second one was a request brought to me from Paul McKenna about the internet use policy. So currently, right now, we either ask people to have their library card or present an ID such as a driver's license to sign up for a computer. But what, what he has, what he's, he's requesting is that. He, he questions whether or not we want to require a library card or license. For people who want to use the computers. And I said I would bring it to you all because essentially what, what we're doing right now is we ask people to sign up using their library card. We scan it just to make sure they're in good standing. If they don't have a card or they're out of state, we take their license. And if, for whatever reason, they don't have either, they don't have a picture ID. I'd like to kind of not tell people they can't use the computers. Because we don't want to turn people away if they have important stuff they need to do. So in extreme cases where they don't have any forms of ID. We tend to let them use the computers because there's usually somebody at the reference desk who can see the computers directly in front of them. So that we know if there's anything bad going on. Then again, if people were to sign up with their library card and leave. You know, Heather and Paul check our computers once a day to do a quick scan to make sure nobody saved anything. They shouldn't have anything like that. But if there's two to three people cycling through that computer in a day until somebody checks it. If somebody downloaded something that isn't so nice. We couldn't trace it back to one person without going through after every time somebody uses a station to check it, which is too time consuming. So that is, that is essentially, Paul was just questioning, you know, if, if we'd be willing to change it to not require anything. My thoughts are that if we require something, I feel like that deters people a little bit from doing anything that they shouldn't. If, if, you know, you know, if you come in and you're like, I want to do something bad, I want to download copyrighted material. If I've seen your license, I think you're probably least likely to do that.
Yeah.
But that is, that is just my, my thoughts. So there, there's some kind of differing of opinion on there, but I wanted to bring it towards the board because this is an official policy. I am, I am happy with, with keeping it as is, you know, library card, if no card, use a license. If no license, well, we can make an exception for one time so you can use the computer.
Well, if you don't have a license, you should have a card in front of the state.
Picture ID, yeah.
Total on it, yeah.
But what about children or something?
Yeah, yeah, so we're a little bit more.
They're going to have high school IDs or something helpful.
And even younger kids, you know, where we're kind of a little bit more lax. Because there's, there's all kinds of, there's the net nanny on the children's room computers. So you really can't do anything on there, that's not going to catch, so. So, yeah, I said I'd bring it towards you guys to get your, your thoughts and opinions on it, since it is an official policy. And it's something we've done for many, many years.
So your reason for asking for the ID is just to keep mentally honest?
A little bit honest, yeah.
That, that's, that's my thinking. The reason we're asking for the idea of the library card is to just keep track of who was on the computer. So say, for example, you know, somebody downloaded something that they shouldn't have. We can kind of go back and get a relatively good idea of who did it. Or like, for example, sometimes people have left like a USB drive in it or something. So we can kind of go back and, and see who was just recently at that station. The, the whole idea of kind of having in people's heads, hmm, somebody knows who I am, maybe I shouldn't do that. That's just kind of my, my opinion on the side of things that, you know, somebody might, would be less likely to do something criminal if they presented their license. And especially if you are.
If they download something and it's left on the computer and the next person finds it, be it porn or whatever.
Yeah, so, so I'm, I am fine with having a little bit of structure.
But well, there's so many forms of ID. And even if you go to vote, you can show a bill with your address on it, your name and address.
You don't need ID to vote.
Not mask.
Not anymore, but yeah. Sometimes if you said that you registered at the DMV, the register, the mechanical registry and nothing shows up, they will accept a bill. You know, utility bill with your address on it or something.
You're still shredding the log at the end of the day.
Yes, log gets shredded at the end of the day. So there's, there's no records that are officially kept longer than a day.
Right, yeah.
So.
It, it sounds like what you've got now serves the purpose and.
Yeah.
If there is some situation, we decide to waive the rules.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the, the role of computers face, you know, our reference librarians can see.
And so I just assume leave it the way it is.
Yeah.
That's, that's my opinion.
No, I agree, leaving it the way it is.
disembodied voice.
I know, some, I, I'm not saying I'm forgetting you're there, Tammy, but sometimes the voice comes out of the computer. Hello. And then, so I, I did create two new policies, just to have something. This, the lost child policy is kind of part of the emergency planning. But another librarian said that they, that it was something good to have. So I figured, you know, we, we might as well have one. But just as that, as soon as one of the staff is alerted that there is a child missing. One person will dial 911, another person will be positioned by the front door just to make sure nobody either enters or leaves the building. And.
What, what, what is this, lost child?
So if, if a parent says that their child, you know, if they come up that says that a parent is missed, you know, not the parent is missing. God forbid, the parent is missing, no. So if, if a child is missing, because you know, there's been cases where like, last week, there was a wandering child in the building. And the mother had no idea that he'd even walked away. She was on the other side, she was all the way over there. And so, you know, I can see, you know, the, the moment of panic when she realizes he's gone. And I was like, okay, we should have something in place. Because this, it is an emergency situation. So, so essentially, one person swashes the doors, one person calls 911. While we're awaiting emergency services to arrive, we'll also go through and check all of the areas of the building, like bathrooms, playhouse, anything like that. And then, you know, once, once the authorities arrive, the issue will be handed over to them. Was there any questions on that?
Sounds good.
And lastly is the photography policy. We, we decided we needed to have something in place. The staff who already take pictures for programs, we have a photo release form that we use. However, there was one program a little while ago. Reporter just comes in plain clothes, doesn't say anything to any of us, just comes into the program and starts taking pictures. Which is at first very uncomfortable for all the staff, you know, I, I want them to kind of at least let us know they're coming.
Was, was this Peter or somebody?
It was somebody from the Westfield News. And it was just, it was just kind of a weird situation. So, but basically, you know, we can't, we can't stop anybody from taking pictures. It is a public place. So, but, what, what I basically wanted to put down into a policy is that, you know. It's up to the individual to get their own permissions. If the newspaper wants to come in and take pictures, you have to get your own permissions from people. The library has no place in that, you know, when we take picture, when staff take pictures for our own programs, we'll go through the photo release form process. This is for people, you know, if you're from the news or, or any other organization that wants to do pictures, anything like that. You know, you need to be responsible for obtaining permissions of anybody in your pictures, you know, the library. That's, that's their thing. And it also basically states, you know, if, if somebody from a news outlet wants to come in and take pictures of a program. You need to let us know at the circulation desk who you are, don't just come breezing by, you know. We don't know what's going on and it's kind of, it takes people aback, it's.
Well, you don't even know the person is here or what they're doing.
Or what they're doing or where they're from.
Got a private detective or something.
Yeah, it's, it's very, it's very strange.
Yeah.
So basically, this, this essentially takes the responsibility out of the library's hands for the newspaper or any organization that wants to come in and do pictures. If you're not affiliated with the library, then you're responsible for getting all the permissions. You are responsible for basically, you know, handling the situation. And yeah, the, the final sentence, the library is not responsible for the actions of any aforementioned group and their actions with any media created at the library. So basically, and, and we, there has been also more information going around about the First Amendment audits, which I think we talked about a little while ago. And I, I wanted to make sure that, you know, this kind of covered that too, in that patrons can come in. A First Amendment auditor would be a patron, they can come in, this is a public place, they have the right to video, record, whatever they want to. It's out of our hands, they need to obtain the permissions and, because essentially, we, we can't tell them that they can't video. And they can't, they can't record anything like that, so.
That stuff still go on?
Yes, yeah, and one of.
Talking about it maybe a year ago.
Yeah, and then there was, there was an article in one of the library journals that said it's, it's becoming more common again. And they're actually targeting smaller libraries because they think smaller libraries will be more unprepared for them to come in and do such things. So I did, I did talk to all our staff that if they come in, let them record. There, I did put signs up at the circulation desk, by the children's desk, by the reference desk and the staff room. So that they know what is a designated staff area that they cannot enter. So everything's labeled clearly. But we can't tell them they can't record, it's a public place. The only thing, you know, we can ask them to do is to just, you know, ask them to be mindful that there may be children, there may be minors. Or there may be people that are uncomfortable with them doing that. But we can't tell them, we can't tell them no, so. So if, if you guys think that this, this policy is, is helpful. I mean, I think, I think essentially what I wanted to do is take the responsibility out. My, my job is not to be the, the news reporter's policeman, you know, I can't. Every time they come, come in, you can't keep track of what they're taking pictures of or anything like that. And what they do with the pictures, you know, we can't control that, so.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve all the policies.
As, as submitted whatever.
As submitted, yeah.
As submitted, whatever.
Whatever, yeah. I'll second that.
Tammy?
Says yes.
And then that is, that is the last of what I have. Our next meeting looks like it'll be February 8th, so we'll get, I know it's kind of close, but.
That's two weeks.
It'll get us back on our regularly scheduled programs because this month, kind of, when we, by the time we got the budget, I did not have enough time to prepare everything for January 11th, so.
Yeah, that's good.
Yep, so if we get back on February 8th and we're back on our, our regular second Tuesday.
And that's going to be hybrid, right?
Hybrid, yes, with the owl.
Alrighty. Oh, one thing I did want to ask you.
Are we adjourned?
Oh, yeah, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.